Can I ask everyone to find a seat? We're gonna get started now. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming and welcome to the January regular meeting of the Hoboken Board of Education. Mr. Moffett, would you read us in?
Yes, sir. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of this meeting was published in a local paper on January 13, 2018, and January 14, 2018. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable television channel 77 and FiOS channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district's homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if the use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Could you please rise for this little flag?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
In the roll call, please. Ms. Angley?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Ms. Soboloff?
Here.
Ms. DeKurian?
Here.
And Mr. Klovefeld?
Here.
We have a quorum. First item on the agenda, as always, is our recognitions, student and faculty recognitions. Mr. Pitsu, you're gonna start.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Brandt Student of the Month, Livia Jelineus. Nominated by Mr. Sheridan, due to an overall achievement and for her wonderful disposition and standout Brandt Buddy characteristics. Livia is a shining star. She comes to school ready to learn and has an infectious personality. She is curious and always looking to know and understand more. She is never without her trademark smile. I think we see it now, don't we? There we go. And Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez smiles whenever she sees you. She embodies the best of a powerful, socially-emotional learning environment, well deserved. And this message comes from Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez. Okay. Livia excels in the areas of cooperation, consideration, positive attitude, and has great attendance and is a quintessential Brandt bear. What makes a student an asset? She is respectful of her teachers and peers and always eager to learn. She perseveres through challenging tasks and does not get upset when she doesn't succeed on her first attempts. She always asks many questions to clarify her own understanding. She's also a great friend because she's a great listener, takes turns, and is always cooperative. This message comes from Mr. Sheridan. In the future, I want to become a chef. I like to bake with my mom. I love to make gingerbread cookies and eat them. I once had one in a party and had to make one myself. I did a great job. I also like arts and crafts. What? You do? All right. One time, I created a ladybug out of circles. I added eyes and other things to make it a real ladybug. Student quote: Being chosen as student of the month makes me so happy. I knew it as soon as I was called to the principal's office. I thought either I'm going home early, or I'm the student of the month. This is great. Let's give Livia a big round of applause for this great honor. Our Collaboral Student of the Month for December 2017, Emily De La Rosa, grade 1. All right. Emily joined the first-grade family at Collaboral Elementary School with an eagerness to learn and a positive attitude. Her kind gestures and contagious smile brings happiness to her peers. She spearheads ideas and organizes projects for her groups. She's a born leader and a role model in the first-grade class. When Emily grows up, she would like to be a veterinarian to help sick animals. She enjoys reading and writing stories with her brothers Alex and Joseph. Ms. Yu quotes: It is an amazing experience to engage Emily's appetite for knowledge. She embraces her Mexican heritage and loves to share her family's culture with our class. I can't wait to see what the future holds for our Emily. Dr. Vespinana, your principal quotes: At Collaboral, we have a kindness referral program where students receive recognition when they are caught doing something kind. Emily is regularly recognized in this program, and the citizenship that she demonstrates daily is inspiring. Let's give Emily a round of applause for obtaining this honor for December 2017. Our Student of the Month recipient from Connors Elementary School, Nia Freeman, grade 5. Nia was nominated by her fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Ortiz. Mrs. Ortiz states that Nia is a student who comes in every day ready to learn and will try her best. If she does not understand something, she uses the growth mindset that we learned about this year to push forward and grow from her difficulties. Mrs. Ortiz also shares that Nia always participates and is eager to get started on her work. Not only does Nia finish her work quickly and with pride, but she also helps her peers succeed. Dr. Pollens, her building principal, is so very proud of Nia as she models daily what it means to be kind and caring. She is kind and respectful to her peers, teachers, and school administration. She models appropriate behavior at all times. She's an excellent big sister who helps her parents with her three younger siblings on a daily basis. She's a proud member of a Connors choir and band and enjoys tapping into her musical talents. Nia shared that the band and choir are important to her, and she loves participating in performances. Dr. Pollens thinks of the following quote from the Dalai Lama: Our prime purpose in this life is to help others, and if you can't help them, at least don't hurt them. Nia is a student who is always helping and does not take part in hurting others. We are also very proud of Nia and her achievements. We know that she has a bright future ahead of her. At this time, let's give Nia a loud round of applause on obtaining this great honor. Our Student of the Month recipient from Wallace School, Paz De La Torre, grade 5. Paz De La Torre is the Wallace Student of the Month for December 2017, nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Martinez. Mrs. Martinez nominated Paz for outstanding academic achievements and especially for her leadership role in class. Her teacher said she's a leader and a role model who leads with attributes that every leader should have: the courage to make things better for others, the patience to lead a community into gathering and working together for the good of all, and the compassion to comprehend that leading with kindness is essential to fostering peace and growth in a community. Mrs. Martinez also said it is not surprising that Paz's name means peace and that her surname, De La Torre, translates from Spanish to "from the tower." From this name encompasses her personality. She's a beacon of peace. Principal Shannon said Paz is a true role model for our entire school community. Her presence is always felt, and she brings an air of confidence and a wonderful smile to our learning community each and every day. In addition to all she does for her classroom community, Paz is a part of the school council and fulfills her duties as class representative as diligently as she leads her class. She has earned her position in first honors and has earned a place on the honor roll for the past two years. Paz's favorite subject is mathematics. Her hobbies are swimming, art, singing, and running. Her favorite sports, rather, are swimming and track. Her favorite music is the Hamilton soundtrack. She wants to attend the University of Southern California, USC, and aspires to be an Olympic swimmer and/or an advanced math teacher. Paz states that she loves what she loves most about Wallace School: The greatest, I'm sorry, the great teachers, all the friends I have in Wallace, and how different cultures are welcomed in our school. Congratulations, Paz, the Wallace Student of the Month for December 2017. The Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month, Kai Holstrom. The Hoboken Middle School December Student of the Month is Kai Holstrom. Kai is recommended by his mathematics teacher, Ms. Gennarelli. Kai is nominated because of his academic achievement, outstanding attitude, attendance, cooperation, citizenship, and empathy towards others. He is also nominated for his community involvement as a member of the Environmental Science Club. Kai is inquisitive, cooperative, and demonstrates a positive attitude each and every day. Kai is a cooperative student. He is helpful and always participates, be it in read-aloud, debate, or offering words of encouragement to his fellow students. He also has a smiling hello for teachers and peers. Ms. Gennarelli used the following quote to describe you: You have brains in your head, you have feet in your shoes, you can steer yourself in any direction you choose, oh the places you go. This quote is from Dr. Seuss. This quote reminds me of Kai because of his great nature. It's whimsical, and so is Kai. Many people may not know it, but Kai has an excellent sense of humor and makes me laugh at least once a day. He is truly going places. I'm happy to be part of his journey. Your principal, Dr. Davis, used the following quote to describe you: Silence is a source of great strength. Kai is the etonym of this quote. His silence is the great strength of his attention to detail, ability to focus, resulting in the skills which make him a well-rounded student and productive member of the community. His personal hobbies are drawing, wakeboarding, coding. His favorite subjects are science, mathematics, and reading. His sports interests are tennis, swimming, basketball from time to time. His musical interests lie in the area violin that's performed district-wide. His colleges of choice include an Ivy League school. He has his eye on Harvard. His career aspiration is to be a computer coder, maybe even inventing his own app or game. When asked about a quote which describes the school, Kai stated, "Hoboken Middle School holds pride." When asked about the honor of receiving the recognition, he said, "I was very much surprised, but certainly very grateful, and all around filled with gratitude." Hoboken Middle School is so very proud of Kai and his accomplishments, he exhibits the true essence of a Hoboken Middle School pride student: perseverance, respect, integrity, dedication, and excellence. Congratulations on an award well deserved. Ms. Henley said that Ricky is a kind and respectful student. He hands in all work on time, fully completed, and always correct. Ricky performs very well on tests and quizzes. What makes Ricky stand out is how he jumps at the opportunity to help his classmates, even if they are struggling with the content. Your current average in calculus is 103. That is excellent. I did that warrants a big round of applause. Ricky is a member of the football team in Heroes and Cool Kids. Ricky's hobbies include watching TV and physical fitness. Principal Picky Pietro states, "I've had the pleasure of knowing Ricky since seventh grade, and I can tell you that there is a maturity about him even that early on. In the cafeteria, he would engage in conversation about high school and subsequently college. I have seen this young man mature over the past five years, and I see such a smart, determined, dedicated young man who will go on to do great things. I appreciate so much about him, but it is his ability to get back to the school community that I like so much. He has developed a great rapport with the faculty and administration over the years and has a good understanding of how to work with the people. I truly appreciate his sense of humor. He always knows how to make me smile and laugh." That's true. "I am confident Ricky has the tools necessary for great success after he graduates, and I look forward to hearing about his success at the high school." Ricky's post-secondary plans include applying to Stony Brook University, Temple University, and the University of New Hampshire to study criminal justice. When notified about the award, Ricky said, "I am pleased that the school chose me over all the other kids in our school. I feel like I achieved something great." Let's give Ricky a big round of applause this evening. During the recognition portion of the meeting, I would like to just share a few events by highlighting some school highlights of some of the great events that took place in the observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Throughout the week of January 8th, East School participated in events that celebrated the life and accomplishments of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. At Brandt Primary School, students engaged in a lesson on civil rights and on how citizenship plays a role in their development. At Collaboral Elementary School, students took part in creating "I Have a Dream." Students reflected on the words of the famous "I Have a Dream" speech, and as a result, they composed and discussed what they would like to see change in the world. At Thomas G. Connors Elementary School, students wrote about their dreams for the future and how the work of Dr. King benefited them today. At Wallace Elementary School, students partook in the discussion of equality and peace. Students have the opportunity to watch segments on the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and from these clips, students engage in discussions about the influence that Dr. King had on the world since the 1950s. At Hoboken Middle School, the student council and home representatives collected each student's dream reflection and thus created the "I Have a Dream" wall on both the 7th and 8th grade floors. At Hoboken High School, teachers throughout the week incorporated the teachings of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. into their lessons as well as writing assignments. For example, in English Language Arts, the letters from Birmingham was explored. Students have the opportunity to read this powerful piece and discuss the message behind the letters. As we enter into Black History Month, students will continue to explore the contributions, experiences, and profound legacies of African-Americans from past to present. This will certainly be a supplement to an enhancement of the existing curriculum. Thank you.
Now I have the distinct honor to do staff recognitions for the month of December. I'm going to begin with Ms. Nori Rojas from the Hoboken Early Childhood Department. The Office of Early Childhood and the Joseph F. Brandt Primary School nominated Ms. Nori Rojas as Staff Member of the Month for December. Ms. Rojas has been working in the Hoboken Public School District since 2009. Initially, she began in the capacity of family advocate and then quickly transitioned to a leadership team position within the preschool program as a community and parent involvement specialist. In this role, her responsibilities include providing families with information so that they may enroll in our stellar preschool program. She facilitates the enrollment process. She interfaces with preschool providers to provide professional development opportunities, and she leads in the placement of close to 900 preschool 3 and 4 children across the district. She is organized, accessible, engaging, thoughtful, and she is a consummate perfectionist. Ms. Rodriguez Gomez can recall meeting Ms. Rojas approximately four years ago and being impressed with her deep knowledge of both the program and of the city of Hoboken. It was apparent to her that Ms. Rojas was someone who was vested both heart and soul into the success of our youngest learners. Ms. Rodriguez Gomez shared that Ms. Rojas is an invaluable member of her team. She certainly stands out as a staff member for her unwavering dedication of selflessness and time to the success of our students. She is responsive to families, and she is thoughtful about the school placement process in partnership with the Director of Early Childhood. And we all know that that is a somewhat challenging task. She has an infectious energy, and she is always smiling. It is this personality that makes her so loved in the early childhood world, at the Brandt School and across the Hoboken School District. There is nothing that I personally ask of Ms. Rojas that does not get her full commitment and attention. Ms. Rojas is a professional who should be recognized for her brilliance and for her talent. She is a natural leader, and as Robin Sharma shares, leadership is not just about a title or about a designation. It's about impact, influence, and inspiration. Ms. Rojas is a great leader because her work has a great impact on our preschool world. She is a great leader because her work has influence on the progress of our program. And she is a great leader because she has inspired so many with her quiet resolve. On behalf of the Hoboken Board of Education, congratulations, Ms. Rojas, for being named December Staff Member of the Month. We have two more staff members to recognize this evening. I am ecstatic to honor Mrs. Gwendolyn White, Special Education Resource Teacher at Thomas Ms. White has been educating the hearts and minds of the Hoboken Public School District's children since November 2000. When interacting with Ms. White, one thing remains extremely clear: Her work is solely about her students. The love that she expresses for each and every one of them and her desire to see them succeed are mirrored by her words and her actions. Last year, Ms. White took on the coordinator position of the Passport to Learning Program at the Connors Elementary School. She is fully dedicated to the inner workings of the program, but in addition, she is completely invested in providing students with exciting and equitable opportunities after school. Ms. White is passionate in every position that she holds. She arrives early every morning to prepare. Some may ask why so early. Because Ms. White will often say, "My children need me. I must be prepared, and I must not be absent." Mrs. White has mentored several teachers within our school district, developing each one pedagogically. Since she has earned tenure, there certainly seems to be a tradition that has been established. Ms. White shall coach those new staff members around her, and without fail, she graciously accepts the challenge year in and year out. As a member of the Thomas G. Connors community, aside from the roles and the responsibilities that are expected, Ms. White leads kindergarten open house tours. She makes great meals for the school community. She provides students with a warm smile and firm guidance, and she continues to build relationships with families within our community. Ms. White is well-respected and appreciated by teachers, students, and administrators alike. She possesses commitment, dedication, and passion for teaching and learning. And she loves the Hoboken Public School District. There is not a time that I see Ms. White that she doesn't say, "How can I help?" She is truly the epitome of a great teacher leader. On behalf of the Hoboken Board of Education, congratulations, Ms. White, for being named December Staff Member of the Month. And will Mr. Arnon come on up? All right. So finally, I am honored to recognize Mr. Damian Arnon, Guidance Counselor at Hoboken High School and District Genesis and Testing Coordinator for the district. From seeking opportunities for his students to working alongside his counseling counterparts, Mr. Arnon's dedication to students' 21st century learning and college and career readiness is unparalleled. Mr. Arnon has served as Guidance Counselor for the Hoboken School District since 2009. He is continually looking for new and innovative ideas to support students and teachers. Additionally, he is committed to making Hoboken High School a resource for other schools statewide. Mr. Arnon embodies what is meant to be a true Guidance Counselor. He is resourceful, dedicated, and innovative. From ensuring that students receive print-and-review class information to meeting with students throughout the day, to discussing instant decision days, early admission, and a host of other subsequent opportunities, Mr. Arnon is not merely a well-rounded Guidance Counselor. He is a model. There is never a time when staff members or students ask Mr. Arnon for his guidance or expertise that he answers no. He too continuously asks, just like some of our other staff members that have been honored here tonight, "How can I better serve you?" Mr. Arnon is sought out in the community and in the school by parents who recognize him as an individual who is deeply committed to all of our students. Mr. Arnon exhibits exceptional results in the college and career planning process as well as securing educational enrichment opportunities for all of our students. His success is a direct result of his drive to expand experiences for all of our kids. Guidance counselors make significant contributions to the overall well-being of students. They have unique qualifications and skills that allow them to address students' academic, social, emotional, and career development needs. Mr. Arnon clearly possesses all of these qualifications and more. He is a leader in the department. He and his colleagues to date have assisted our current senior class in amassing over $8.5 million in scholarships, and the season is yet to be over. Mr. Arnon is often heard saying, "We will continue to open pathways for our students. Whatever the students need, we are here for them." Mr. Arnon is dependable, resilient, and highly expeditious in completing tasks. He is truly a coveted member of the Hoboken Public School District family. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations, Mr. Arnon, for being named December Student of the Month.
Well, thank you, and congratulations to students and faculty members. I'm gonna take a quick recess for a few minutes, I think, before we resume with the business of the meeting. Give families with young children a chance to go home and do some of their homework and things. So we'll resume in about three or four minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Do you guys want to find a seat in the facing the stage? All right, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. For the sake of this presentation, I would recommend that board members can take a seat in the audience, and business administrators.
Hi, Evelyn. How are you? Happy new year, Evelyn. Busy? Tom, we're good? Okay. Uh, it's okay. It's okay. We're actually going to begin this portion of the meeting with a superintendent's report, so before the presentation, there's a few things that I would like to report out and share. This evening, you are going to see a presentation that has data and related information that the Board of Education has requested of me and from our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Fitchew, to put together. The information is drawn from our Genesis Student Information System, NJSMART, and the Civil Rights Data Collection reports that are submitted every two years. But before I begin with that presentation, I would first like to report on a few items. At Hoboken High School, I'm extremely proud to report that Principal Pika Pietra received a letter today indicating that Hoboken High School is now officially a participating school in the AP Capstone Program, and that we will support our first cohort of students participating in the AP Seminar Course in the 2018-2019 school year. Also pleased to report that our students competed extremely well in San Francisco this past weekend at the Harvard Model Congress Experience, and they are on their way back as we speak. When they touch down, we will shortly then send teams off to St. Louis to compete in the National Chemistry Competition at Washington University and the National Thespians Competition at the University of Nebraska. In the spring, our students will also tour Italy through our Classroom Without Walls Program. I'm also delighted to report that we have solidified our partnership with Stevens University's ACES Program in order to expand summer learning experiences for underrepresented students in the STEM field, and that we are now about to announce the Group Summer Scholars Research Program at Kane University to our students, along with the Future Professionals Program at the University of Massachusetts and the Wakesman Institute at Rutgers University. In addition, I'm also proud to announce that we will be taking a group of students to NJIT this weekend to explore and consider a number of pre-college programs there as well. I'm completely thrilled to tell you about another partnership that we have established with Stevens Institute, but I'm actually going to leave that to Ms. Dolar to announce during her committee report. I would like to take a moment to boast a bit about our Theater Arts Program. This weekend, our students competed in the New Jersey Thespians Competition. They competed against 1,100 students across the state. We had eight students win superior medals that will allow them to compete against all other winners in the world at the International Thesbian Festival in Lincoln, Nebraska from June 25th to June 27th. Our students also won first place in the Technical Olympics overall, and Hannah Mack won two individual awards, and our entire stage crew won for stage management and ground planning. Our one-act play Wilderness won second place overall. Sophia Melphy won first place Best Actress for Wilderness. Daniel Safanova won second place Best Actor for Wilderness, and Hannah Mack won a Superior Medal for Contrasting Monologues. David Rivera won a Superior Medal for Musical Theater Solo, and Sophia Melphy and Demara Davenport won Superior Medals for Duet Acting Scenes. Our cast of Spring Awakening won a Superior Medal in Group Musical Theater for Song, and David Rivera and Hannah Mack got college callbacks from multiple college theater programs throughout the weekend. So all in all, it was a great weekend of theater for us in the Hoboken Public School District. Hudson County Theater Day is Friday, and we have five high schools from the area coming to Hoboken High School to take and participate in workshops with professional actors from Broadway. It's an amazing day and a great opportunity for our students. We're extremely happy to host that event. I'm also very pleased to announce that we have a group of extremely talented musicians from our fifth and our sixth graders, our fifth and our sixth grade, that will be participating in the highly competitive Chamber Day at Montclair State University under the leadership of Stephanie Savco and Gary Enrico on January 27th. Keep in mind that our Passport to Learning Program will be changing over to its new semester on February 5th, and that a host of middle school activities have been planned for our current fifth and sixth grade students and their families. Sixth graders, as they plan for next school year, and fifth graders who are just a little bit anxious and excited about planning for the following year. And finally, I'm not sure if you're aware of this or not, but all of our schools that were currently registered, after completing self-assessments, have finally moved into Phase Two of the Future Ready Schools New Jersey Technology Initiative. That's all I have for this evening regarding advancements, accomplishments, and some of our exciting news, and at this time, I'm going to move on to a presentation that the Board of Education asked that we put together for all of you. This presentation will be loaded on our website, so you're more than welcome to take a look at it, ask questions, and even send follow-up questions afterward. So feel free and comfortable to do that. So the presentation this evening... All right, so this evening's presentation is focusing on the concept of diversity, inclusion, and whole world. What we noticed when putting this presentation together and looking at all of the data was that, once you peel one layer of an onion back with data, more data pops up, and then more data, and you can almost continue on and on and on and on, and keep going further and further and further. So for the purpose of having a comprehensive presentation with dialogue points, we tried to consolidate it and keep it as tight as possible, because there were some things that really came out very clear, loud and clear, and as a result of that, we put a small executive summary together, a brief executive summary together, so that we can almost start with the end in mind and then work our way backwards. And the executive summary really kind of flows as follows. Number one, we do see a major shift in the demographics and the footprint of the Hoboken Public School District. This executive summary and the presentation also focuses on the different makeup, the complexities, and the needs of each of our schools, because they are all very different in terms of their needs. The presentation also attempts to tackle some misconceptions about our community. So it's not just necessarily about our individual schools, but also the community holistically. It also will put forth a strategy to best adapt to the changes that we see within the changing demographics in order to empower our students and to succeed. And then also, the presentation itself will highlight the many advancements that we see in our schools and that we see collectively as a community by our students, parents, teachers, administrators, et cetera, who are working very closely and very diligently to make some of these changes take place. So the presentation is actually going to be broken down into three components. So conceptually, if you can think about it, the presentation will first present some data so that we have the ability to analyze kind of the changing patterns that we're seeing. It will then begin to prioritize, almost identifying areas that do require us to focus on moving forward, and then some areas that we may in fact be catering to our student needs already. And then finally, an execution stage, which is our final component, and that will be, what are some recommended actions that we have as a result of this data? This presentation is really about establishing the socioeconomic footprint and our diversity footprint in the district. This presentation is not for the purpose of outlining every single aspect of student achievement, et cetera. It's a little bit more of a holistic picture, so that you have an idea of what's actually happening here. So, again, starting with the big picture, and then kind of funneling down a little bit, sometimes we call that in education, starting with the end in mind, it's kind of a backward design, so for everyone who is pretty familiar with unit and lesson planning, it's kind of more effective in the process of having dialogue to start with the bigger picture and then work our way backwards. So with that being said, the bigger picture really is the city of Hoboken. What is happening in the city of Hoboken? Is there something happening in terms of shifting demographics? And one of the things that you can take a look at is where the city was in 2014 and where the city is now in terms of socioeconomics. I also want to take a minute before we get a little bit further in the presentation to also talk a little bit about our district factor group. So I'm not sure how many people know what the term district factor group means, but district factor group is actually something that's known as a DFG group. Sometimes we hear it as DFG. What it really stands for is district factor group. So in other words, what we can see is that the New Jersey Department of Education introduced district factor groups way back in 1975, and the system is a way to help the Department of Education do like comparisons of school districts on a number of topics. And so with that being said, the districts will go on a continuum from an A to a J level. There's also a V level now, but for the purpose of our conversation, A through J. So your J-factor school districts, there aren't a lot of them in the state of New Jersey. There are approximately eight or nine J-factor school districts. Those districts would be districts such as Upper Saddle River, Essex Falls, Little Silver, Cranberry. Your school districts with communities that possess the highest socioeconomic footprints in the state of New Jersey. And your A-factor districts are your districts with the lowest socioeconomic footprints. Okay? So the Hoboken School District, when it was deemed an Abbott School District, we are now a former Abbott District, not necessarily because where we fall with our district factor group, but we are a former Abbott District because all Abbott districts have been deemed and ruled former Abbott Districts. However, we still must, because we were a part of the original Abbott decision, follow all the guidelines and the requirements that are associated with the Abbott rule. Okay? Interestingly, one of the larger conceptual topics or ideas that you're going to see in this presentation is that Hoboken's complexities are very wide, in the sense that while we are in the district factor group ranking an FG-factor school district, our high school and our middle school do not reflect the FG-factor footprint. We are still closer to the A-factor school district, where our preschool and our kindergarten are on the FG, and quite frankly, maybe even GH range, and yet our third grade and our fourth grade and our fifth grade may be somewhere in between. So we're actually a school district that probably possesses characteristics of three district factor groups in one. So some of the comparisons at different grade levels are being done on the basis of the DFG-factor school district FG. Okay? So just to give a little bit of background there. So if we look at the Hoboken School District, so you see kind of the whole community, and then you see how the Department of Education breaks communities down, we then can look at the Hoboken School District, and we can see that we have seen or realized a 10% enrollment increase over the last few years. So our enrollment patterns are also shifting, and our student enrollment numbers are growing. So let's just take a look at some of our footprints so that you can get a sense. In order to help facilitate dialogue, we included not only diversity footprint, but footprints, but we also included socioeconomic footprints, so that you can see the complexities in both areas. So if we look at our diversity footprint, and I would like you to kind of take a look at the comparison, we used 2014, 2015 as a baseline, just predominantly because if we go back, if we went back too far, we weren't really 100% sure if we were going to be, if we went back 10 years versus three years or four years ago, the numbers in the school districts have been skewed so much that we are finally beginning to see a consistent pattern of growth. So we went back to the year that seemed to have started that consistent pattern. Okay? So you can see on this slide some of the changes and the shifts. There is a summary piece in the middle with bullet points, just so you get a better idea of what the chart is actually saying. Okay? If we look at the changes in the socioeconomic pattern, you can see what that looks like as well. Now, both of those slides are K through 12, and what you are going to see is that we broke these down even further, because where we are in fact seeing more of the radical shifts and the radical changes are at the K through 6 level. Okay? So as you're seeing some changes here, when I show you grades 9 through 12, and I show you even grade 7 and 8, you're not going to see too much of a radical shift. However, looking at the school district holistically in those pie charts, one of the things that we are in fact seeing is a reverse phenomenon in growth in our student population. So in other words, if we look at our 12th grade class versus our 8th grade class, our 4th grade class, and our kindergarten class in a breakdown of minority versus non-minority children, what is beginning to occur, and without anecdotally providing information, but one of the things that we are in fact noticing, we're seeing, is that there is in fact an increase of our non-minority population, and there is a decrease in our minority population. So that could potentially lead you to think that maybe it's because there's so much development in the community that the non-minority population is growing radically or drastically, and just by way of that, the percentages of our enrollment are kind of shifting. But we're actually seeing in terms of raw numbers that two things are happening in the city of Hoboken. Okay? And what we are seeing in the city of Hoboken is not only growth in our non-minority population, but we are in fact, in the Hoboken Public Schools, seeing a decrease in the raw numbers of our minority population, which begs the question within the community to find out what in fact is happening, or what in fact is potentially going on in the community, potentially with affordable housing and potentially with the, in the Housing Authority, if something is causing that shift to occur. Okay? If we look at our socioeconomic breakdown or footprint, you can also see that from our high school to our K to 6 level in 2017, 2018, that our high school remains pretty consistent at the 75%. I would say 72 to 76%. That's been kind of our range over the last few years at the high school level. You can see there is a very small drop at the middle school level, but almost not necessarily completely... but almost not necessarily completely statistically significant. But yet, if you look at our K through 6 level, you do see something radically different. So let's take a minute and see if we can, or a little bit of time, and see if we can begin to understand and address and integrate some of our thoughts and ideas regarding the K-6 world. So if we look at our kindergarten through 6th grade population, you can see the breakdown between Brant and Connors. And I started with that one comparison to give you a little bit of a better sense of where we are. Okay? So we have four elementary schools in the district. One elementary school is a growing elementary school, and that's Brant. It's right now, it's a K through 2 school environment. And each year, that environment, as a result of our growing enrollment, is going to have to continue to expand. So with that being said, I wanted to show you the stark contrast between our school enrollment at Brant and then also the school enrollment at Connors. Because what you will then see, and I'll come back to this, what you will then see is that Wallace and Calabro are almost identical. Okay? Again, we will come back to the Connors-Brant slide. So interestingly, not only when we look at the Connors-Brant socio-diversity footprint, we also need to look at the Connors-Brant socioeconomic footprint. That's also extremely important. So you can see that in those two schools, there is almost a direct reverse phenomenon. If you look at Calabro and Wallace, again, somewhat similar. Okay? So one of the things that I wanted to point out is that in the community holistically, as we see changing demographics, and we are going to get to remedies to what we see, it does beg the question of a larger conversation about all of our schools in the community, not just in the Hoboken Public School District, but all of our schools. So if you look at Brant, Brant actually more closely mirrors what our charter school populations look like. They're almost identical. So if we look at the chart on the right-hand side, this is a chart that reflects all of our charter schools in Hoboken, but the Hoboken residents that are attending. Okay? So the children that live in Hoboken that are attending the Hoboken Charter Schools, that's what you see on the right-hand side, and what you see on the left is Brant. And if you look at the socioeconomic footprint, you will also see somewhat of a fairly close comparison between the two. So why is it important? Is it justification for why Brant's numbers look the way they look or why Connor's numbers look the way they look? Absolutely not, but it's an important dialogue component for the community holistically. So, looking at this next slide, we have been thinking a lot about how we are going to begin to remedy the enrollment pattern at both Brant and Connors. Keeping in mind that we want to be respectful to families that have siblings, but we want to also try and wrap our arms around what happens when we place children from pre-K4 to kindergarten. So this requires a little bit of explanation, but not necessarily really specific breakdowns. But I'll try to give you, to the best of my ability, a little bit of why there are some complexities and challenges. And that is, we have approximately 400 pre-K4, maybe 401 pre-K4 children in the district. That number has been relatively stable over the last couple of years. Okay? It fluctuates a little between the 380 to 400 mark, but we're right around 400 now, and we project that we are going to stay at 400. So why is that important and why is that critical? Well, it's critical because for us to really get a good handle on who our children will be entering into the Hoboken School District, it is not 400, it's not 400 students. What we are finding is that the pattern has been somewhat consistent over the last two years. And so I don't even know if it qualifies as a pattern yet, but we are projecting and predicting the same to happen next year. And that is, it looks like we are enrolling approximately 280 to 290 kindergarten children. Okay? So when... district-wide, district-wide. So just to jump to the enrollment piece, when sometimes people will say, "Why with enrollment is there such a change in the enrollment pattern?" It's because as we see approximately 100 to 110 high school kids graduate, we are now bringing in almost 300 kindergarten children. So every year, we're going to be seeing that particular change. So you, we almost can somewhat predict what our enrollment growth is going to look like. That's just sheer numbers. It's not necessarily addressing who the children are. But when we look at the patterns and we look at the difference between 400 children, or say 400 children, and the 288 that we're enrolling, when we look at who is not in the mix, there is some science to that, and then there is some prediction based on patterns. Who do we know most likely will not be joining us in kindergarten? Well, in our spreadsheet and in our data warehousing, we do know out of the 200 and, or 401 students, how many children have siblings, older siblings, that are already in private schools or are in our charter schools in the community. So with that being said, we do have the ability to remove those children from the list, hypothetically speaking, because we certainly can enroll them, but hypothetically speaking, we will remove them from the list and then look at what our footprint looks like there. When we do that, it leaves us with the next band that we know will most likely either be moving out of the community. Why? Because we see patterns of it each year. Or will choose to potentially enter into another school. And over the last few years, when we look at the information and the data from 2014, 15 to the present, we see that the predominant number of children that are left after the private school children and the charter school children, those children are non-minority that are leaving. So what does that do? It gives us the ability to somewhat project what our diversity footprint is going to be for kindergarten the following year. We have not necessarily looked at it that way in the past. We are looking at it that way now because as we, as we kind of continue the work with looking at both Connors and Brant, obviously, our goal is to have Connors and Brant mirror the Wallace-Calabro footprint. That's what the goal is. So in order to do that, we really have to be very conscious at looking at what our student footprint looks like. When those children from, that are in our pre-K spreadsheet, when we remove them from the mix and we remove the potential children, numbers, out of the list, we end up with a kindergarten population that is somewhere around the 60% or so mark in terms of minority versus non-minority. So it would be, it ends up looking like a, somewhere right around a 60% non-minority footprint with a 40% minority footprint. And that is more consistent with what we have been seeing in our lower grades enrolled. Okay? So now, what do you see up here? And why is this actually here? Because this is a little bit of a risk of even putting this slide out. Why? Because it doesn't necessarily show exactly what we want it to show, but it's important for conversation purposes. So with this, based on what we potentially predict, what our population and our footprint will be for kindergarten next year, if we followed the pattern of looking at what the percentage breakdown is for each subgroup within our diversity footprint, we then took every single child, every child, we mapped out using a Google Analytics program exactly how far every school was from every single child's home in order to get a very good sense of what would this look like in Hoboken. And when we did that, we were able to see, can we place all of our children in schools that actually have a even-oriented breakdown in a school that is either the first closest to their home or their second closest to their home with less than a 12-minute walk and a .9-mile range? That's what we wanted to see. When we did that, this is what we came up with. So does this mean this is the solution? Not necessarily, because it's not aggressive enough. But it was step one of actually looking at our data in a very analytic and systematic way to see where we would be. Okay? So why does this look so different in terms of the growth? Or, "growth" isn't the right word, but the change at Connors versus Brant? And the reason why you see a more, a quicker change at the Connor School than you do see at the Brant School is because Connor's predominantly right now is a school that the footprint is a more heavily minority footprint. Brant is a heavily non-minority footprint. But because Connors is graduating children out and the change is coming up through the kindergarten, first grade level and second grade level, Brant is adding classes. So no matter what mathematically, statistically, when we do it this way, it creates a longer time pattern for Brant than it does for Connors. So we wanted to be, I wanted to be, Mr. Fitzhugh, as well as the Early Childhood Office, wanted to be as transparent with the Board of Education as possible to say, "Look, we started with a first-round attempt to see what would actually happen and what would occur if we attempted to employ this strategy, and this is what we found. So we need to look at this a little bit more aggressively for the 2018, 2019 school year." But this is just a basis for some conversation. So you can kind of see what I had discussed earlier was that 60, right around that 60% breakdown. But this is... This is what we're actually seeing. It's pretty, pretty close to being what would be accurate for the next school year. Okay? So there are some executive summary recommendations that we have that I want to go through, because I think it's really important to put these out there now before we begin to see some further things on our slides. And that is, well, clearly you saw something that requires action on the district's part. And those things are absolutely critical. So with that being said, if you just look at the right-hand side, we have a timeline. We've kind of talked a little bit about an advisory timeline, and that advisory timeline has to do with setting up subcommittees and advisories and different things like that. So let me walk you through what this is actually going to look like. Let me just see something. Hold on one second. I want to shift because I also think I have some advanced placement data that I want to show with you, but before... Are you okay, Tom, if I just stop for one second? I may have loaded the first-round presentation and not the second. Going to start again. The, I shifted some things from charts to narrative, and that's one of the things. But to stop now in between and just give you an idea of where we are going to go from here, and then we're also going to go into some achievements and also a few other things that I think would be important to talk about, I do want you to know that the enrollment piece is just one part of the puzzle. There's a lot of things that are going on in the district that we want to look at, that we want to improve upon, but then there's also a lot of things that we do in fact want to celebrate. So with that being said, we are in fact going to break up all of our areas of study into six distinct areas where we are going to invite all members of the community, families as well as staff members, to participate in a particular subcommittee. So with that being said, one of those subcommittees is going to be student enrollment, preschool information to kindergarten placement, etc. So we'll come back to this at the end, where we have the ability to look at some of the areas a little bit more closely. So with that being said, what are some of the things that are going on that I want to talk about and share with you that are not necessarily like pie charts, graphs and different things like that? Because some of them are narrative-oriented. So as you can tell with the complexities in the district, because our student populations, particularly from a socioeconomic standpoint, are so wide and so diverse, it requires us to have a lot of supports and a lot of different supports in place that sometimes other school districts don't necessarily have or don't necessarily need to have. So there's a few things that I want to talk about a little bit. And one of them is that a couple of years ago, the district had some disciplinarians in the district, particularly at the high school. And what we did was we decided to shift from the disciplinarian role to a role of Dean of Students and Programs. Now, the role of Dean of Students and Programs, and after the presentation, by all means, if you have some questions, you want to talk to Mr. Dickerson, he's here. He'll give you a little bit more of an idea of what the purpose is. But the whole idea of shifting away from the disciplinarians and putting Deans of Students and Programs in place was to have individuals at a particular school that could wrap around kids. So we have two Deans of Students and Programs at the high school, Mr. Pacchini and Mr. Dickerson, that actually own, in essence, the responsibility of two full grade levels each. So they both have the responsibility of a little over 200, 200 and so students. And basically, what they are responsible for is everything from watching for... is everything from watching for enrollment patterns and trends with particular kids to being there to answer questions. They support the students academically. They work hand-in-hand with guidance counselors. So basically, what we have at Hoboken High School is a team, a guidance counselor and a Dean of Students and Programs that works with the kids and loops with the kids all the way through high school. So they are assigned to a grade level of students, and they stay with that grade level of students until they graduate. So they have the ability to really get to know the kids better. And we've seen some interesting things as a result of this shift. And those statistics will come up on a little bit of a later slide. We have an expanded child study team in the district as well as an expanding guidance staff. We have a fully-staffed nursing team. We have a district-wide restorative practice team. And we do have two nationally-certified trainers in the area of restorative practices. We also have trainers at all levels, the elementary, middle, and high school level in the area of mindfulness for kids. We have a team of teachers and staff members that are actually going for training regarding social and emotional learning certification through Maurice Elias's program at Rutgers. There's a whole series of things that we have that are going on to actually support students. But in addition to that, we partner with the Urban League on a continuous basis regarding supports programs. It's not just about getting kids scholarships for after-hour activities. We partner with them on a number of things. In fact, right now, we're partnering them, with them on some clinics and health and wellness workshops. We partner with Perform Care. We partner with Jersey City Medical Center for a partial program, as well as a day program for students. There's a whole host of things that you can see. And in terms of some new activities and events that we have recently participated in and we're beginning to participate in, you know, we have been members of the Cane Diversity Council, but we have become more active members this year. We've also joined the New Jersey Consortium through Excellence Through Equity in the North Area, which is, comes out of the University of Pennsylvania's Program for Equity and Excellence. We have an application that's prepared and has been sent to the Minority Student Achievement Network, which comes out of the University of Wisconsin. So we're in communication with them to determine whether or not we will be accepted. We just missed their enrollment requirement. Need to show a 3,000-student enrollment requirement. But the director is going to take our application into consideration. So we have some recommendations in terms of continuing to analyze data for each of our subcommittees, which I'll go back to after, to continue to look at that data, to target our programming, to increase our family programs to celebrate the diversity footprint in the district. We also are looking at things like curriculum review committees and material review committees. One of the things that Mr. Fitzhugh and I determined is that in a lot of school districts, there is a full committee for reviewing curricular materials. Here, we do it pretty much from a centralized location, but we want to formalize that process to ensure that the curriculum materials that we're using are solid. We are also looking to develop, as a result of the executive summary, a diversity, inclusion, and global learning policy. We will continue to review and update our comprehensive equity plan and also do policy review in our governance committee. The one policy in particular is, once we wrap our head around our student placement and enrollment trend and exactly how we're going to handle that, then it shifts to policy development as well. So there are a few things that I would like to report out in terms of achievements that are really important because they then go back to the idea of, where are we in terms of promoting an inclusive learning environment as well as an environment that supports the needs of all kids? And that is, I want to make sure that everybody understands and knows that our class of 2017, we had a graduation cohort rate at 90%. It was 89.9%. And that is a four-year cohort rate. So to make that very clear, because a lot of times people don't understand what it means. And they think, "Well, the graduation cohort rate, that means 10% of your kids didn't graduate." What the cohort rate actually means is that the Department of Ed tracks the students that come in as freshmen, and that becomes a particular cohort. And with that being said, I want you to think about the fact that we're a high school with about 100 kids, a little over 100 kids at a grade level. So what will happen is with the cohort rate, the first cohort comes in when they're freshmen. If there are students that are on that roster that are in out-of-district placements for special education or are in in-district placement for, say, a special needs program, if the child study team chooses to educate those children until they're 21-years-old, they get pulled out of the cohort and they count against the graduation cohort rate. So that's the first thing. The other thing is that if a child, or a child, a student at the high school level moves out of the community and moves to another state or another country but does not verify the school that they are going to, or if the school district doesn't necessarily collect the data or follow-up in a really thorough manner, if those students do not get either a New Jersey SMART number that is transferred from Hoboken to another school in New Jersey, or that we are able to, with confidence and parental notification, state that the child is enrolled in a school outside of New Jersey or in another country, you cannot count that child as officially leaving. So what then happens is they count against the cohort rate as well. Okay? The larger the class size, when sometimes things like that occur, the smaller the impact. The smaller the class, when things like that occur, the larger the impact. I also want to make sure that people understand that in 2014, the graduation cohort rate was at 83%. So we are aggressively and actively looking at ways to address not only our special needs programming, to be a little bit more aggressive with structured learning experiences while kids are in school. But in fact, if children need to stay in school until they're 21 so that we have the ability to give them the tools they need to be successful, we're going to, despite what that cohort rate looks like. Because it's what's good for kids. 91% of the class of 2017 applied to college. 99% of the 91% that applied to two- and four-year colleges were accepted. And that class of not much over 100 students received $9.4 million in college and university merit scholarships. And a lot of times, people will ask, "Well, all right, that's great, but is it five, six, seven kids that are making up all of the scholarship money?" We wanted to go back and really look at what that was. And it ends up being that 62% of the students that were participating in our college search, which is the 91% of the high school, actually had their hand in some of that scholarship money. So if you think about it from an average perspective, the amount of money that the kids received, it's tremendous. This is not financial aid money. This isn't money that kids have to give back. It's leadership money. It's academic award money. Other students, maybe who did not receive financial awards from colleges or universities, are actually gaining a lot of scholarship money through something called RaiseMe.com. So right now, this year, we've already hit, I think we may have just exceeded the $3-million mark in RaiseMe.com at Hoboken High School. And basically, what RaiseMe.com is, is it helps all of our high school students participate in a bank of college and university scholarship money in colleges and universities that participate in RaiseMe.com. So what happens is, kids can motivate themselves from the time they're freshmen on to receive a certain amount of points in different areas. So if they take AP and honors-level classes, if they have attendance rates that are at a certain level, or if they, you know, start a sport and finish the sport by the end of the season, they get certain amounts of merit-oriented points. Those points are then translated into scholarship dollars that the colleges and universities that participate in actually will provide for those students. So that occurs as well. So if you look at this and you look at the diversity footprint at the high school, I just want to make sure that you understand what this actually means. There's a couple other things that I wanted to point out when we talk about equity. And we also talk about access to programming that I think is really important. And that is, at Hoboken High School, we talked about this before, but in 2014, 2015, 16% of the high school population participated in at least one advanced placement class. In the 2017-2018 school year, we have 31% of the high school participating in at least one advanced placement class. And out of the 31% of the students who are participating in at least one advanced placement class, 92% of those students are minority students. We also don't have any entrance requirements for those classes, except for the AP classes that do have some prerequisites. But I can tell you that what we are doing with things like that is that we're beginning to offer opportunities in the summertime for students to be able to gain access to those classes so they have the ability to actually participate. Give you a little bit of an example related to the college and university process, as well as our AP process, and then as well as things like our Project Lead the Way classes. So one of the things that we found when we looked at our Project Lead the Way classes at the high school, we have a biodiversity biomedical sciences program at the high school. We have a computer science program at the high school. And we have an engineering program at the high school. So just to give you a little bit of an example, when we did our data analysis on all three of those Project Lead the Way classes, one of the things that we found was that our engineering and our biomedical sciences program were almost, particularly biomedical sciences, almost a mirror of our high school footprint. But what we did find was that our computer science program was heavily skewed. It was very much a program that were classes taken by non-minority children. So we thought a lot about it. And we kind of thought, "How can we increase the level of interest and increase the level of motivation with our high school kids in terms of computer science and also in the area of engineering a little bit as well to balance that?" And what we decided to do is we decided to take all of the entry-level Project Lead the Way classes for engineering and for computer science and actually look at our program of studies. And they will now, next year, at the start of the 2018-2019 school year, become part of the required coursework for all students so that every student in Hoboken High School that enters will be required to take the foundational engineering class and the foundational computer science class to be able to better make the decision or the determination if they would like to enroll in those particular programs. So we are continuously looking at information and data like that. We also wanted to take a look at things like our gifted and talented data and see whether or not we need to make some changes in that area. 2014-2015, in order to enter the gifted and talented program in the district, a child had to be selected by a staff member to be tested for the program. So if a parent, if a child wasn't selected and a parent wanted their child to be tested, if they called and yelled loud enough, their child was able to be assessed. If they didn't, or didn't have the means or the understanding of the gifted and talented program or process, the child just simply didn't get tested. So in the 2016 school year, the end of 2015-2016 school year into last school year, we made the determination that it was critical that all students were tested for gifted and talented, no matter what. And we gave parents the right and the choice to opt out as opposed to opting in. So if a child, if a parent did not want their child to be assessed or tested, they certainly have that option. But otherwise, everybody was going to be tested for gifted and talented. So it's kind of interesting because we operate now a identified pull-out gifted and talented program in kindergarten through second grade and our second grade through eighth grade. And our kindergarten and first-grade students are identified as a school-wide population. A lot of school districts will do that so not to have to test children when they're five-years-old and six-years-old and seven-years-old. So with that being said, we have 147 participants in our gifted and talented program, which is 16% of that population. Interestingly, that percentage is very high for a gifted and talented population. In most school districts, the gifted and talented percentages nationwide range anywhere from 3% to 5%. However, what's included in this particular percentage are children who were grandfathered in the process. So one of the things that was really important to me was that we did not remove a child from a gifted and talented program that had participated in the program for years. Separate and apart from Johns Hopkins, which has criteria that is separate from our gifted and talented program, the actual Johns Hopkins data and that opportunity is an independent process. But our process for gifted and talented is, in fact, open to all students and we do test. We also use a gifted and talented assessment called the COGAT, which is a non-language-based assessment so not to put certain children at a disadvantage if there is a language barrier or something along those lines. I also want to talk a little bit about suspension rates because I thought it was kind of important to see what those look like. In 2014-2015, the district had a 6% student school suspension rate. In 2015-2016, it was a 7% suspension rate, K to 12. In 2016-17, the district's suspension rate was at 4%. And we're at the midpoint of this year. It looks like we're actually a little bit below 3%, but if I wanted to be a little bit more conservative about the projection, my guesses will probably be somewhere around the 3% suspension rate at the end of the school year. So in conclusion, there's a couple of things that we're discussing at an administrative level throughout the district. And that is that from a human resources perspective, we are seeing gains in our staff population. And when we put this presentation up, we'll put the appendices with the charts and the graphs, but we're seeing some nice changes in our staff footprint over the last couple of years in terms of diversifying our staff footprint. It's a little bit difficult in a public school district when there's tenure involved. So as people are retiring, it's really incumbent upon a district to reach out to other services such as, like diversity recruitment services, to participate in diversity recruitment fairs and efforts and things like that. So we are, and we are doing that. We participate with a group, a diversity recruitment group called NEMNET, which assists us with not only posting for jobs and opportunities, but also for assisting us in looking for candidates. In addition to that, we have partnered with the Woodrow Wilson Fellows Program. And we participate in those job fairs. We've hired four staff members in the last two years. And three of those staff members are highly, highly, highly effective. All of them are highly effective teachers. Three out of the four staff members have contributed positively to our minority footprint. So we're really happy about that. We've also made very concerted efforts at the administrative level to show also some, a concerted effort to show some models for our students in those areas, not only on the administrative level, also on the teaching level by expanding our world language footprint. by expanding our world language footprint. We have been able to positively show the contribution of our Asian population and our staff members. We have two teachers that are highly involved in the school community right now, and our hope is to kind of continue that process and continue to expand the world language program. Some of the other things that I want to talk a little bit about and bring you back to some of the executive recommendations, but more importantly, the timeline. So, there are categories: human resources, enrollment, curriculum programs, college and career readiness, global learning, and health and wellness. Those are areas that we are going to form subcommittees to do some analysis and to actually see where we are with our data in those areas. On February 5th, we're going to be distributing climate and culture surveys to all staff, students, and families. Because we want to get a better sense of how people are feeling in terms of our opportunities, in terms of access, in terms of overall feel, in terms of climate, culture in the buildings, et cetera. February 23rd, we're going to be sending invitations out to all families to participate in one of the six advisory committees. Each of those committees will have a chair, independent from myself. But families and staff members will have the ability to select and participate one of those particular groups. On March 5th, the chairs of the advisory committees will be reaching out to participants, announcing initial meetings. And meetings will take place throughout March and April. On May 4th and May 8th, the advisory committees will participate in a sharing activity in which they will be sharing some proposed goals. And May 8th is our actual Board of Education meeting, so all of the subcommittees will be presenting out the draft of their goals. On June 12th, so between May 8th and June 12th, as a result of the reporting out of those particular goals and suggestions, there will be an initial policy presented to the Board of Ed regarding diversity, inclusion, and global learning. Throughout the summer, that policy will be reviewed. It'll go through a first reading, it'll go through a second reading. And then, starting in September, we will have, as part of the policy, a series of goals that we will monitor, we will adjust, we will watch, we will see what happens, and we will act accordingly on the basis of what that, what that looks like. So, that's the overall plan of what we're going to be attempting to do. You will find many, many charts, graphs, pie charts that will accompany this presentation. When you see it on the website, you can certainly ask any questions that you have. But the one thing that I want to make sure that everybody understands is that when we look at our school district holistically and we look at the comparisons of the school district, particularly academically, the one thing that has become very clear, because over the last two weeks, people have been talking a lot about it, and that is, when we look at where our middle school and our high school student achievement falls on any kind of scattergram or any kind of chart, and we look at the comparison socioeconomically, it's really easy for people to show our students, comparatively speaking, to the FG factor school district and say, "Look at Hoboken High School, it's performing dead last," or "It's performing here on this, on this chart." But one of the things that we have to remember is that, number one, there's kids behind those numbers. And when we actually look at them and we look at where they fall in terms of like peers and comparisons, and you look across the level from A-factor district to J-factor district, our high school footprint is not an FG factor school district. So is that an excuse that our kids should not be performing higher? Absolutely not. But we must be realistic in terms of our comparisons so that we have an appropriate basis in which to do our work, and also to ensure that we are not attacking the motivations of the kids that are in the school as well. So when we look at it and we actually see where we are, we are performing right above, and again, not a resting on mediocrity, but we are falling right around the fifty percent to above the fifty percent mark of the A-factor school districts. Not dead last with the FG factor school districts that we see in a lot of the presentations by, for example, the Department of Education. So we are actively also reaching out to the Department of Ed, hopefully with the new administration, to understand that these DFG factor comparisons are fine. You can do them wherever you want, but there needs to be a footnote, and there needs to be some sort of consideration for communities that are like Hoboken that actually reflect multiple district factor groups in one. So with that being said, in terms of open and equitable opportunities for kids, we are seeing that our leaders in the district, our valedictorians, our salutatorians, absolutely reflect a diverse footprint. We are seeing that the kids who are honored at our Students of the Month are, reflect a diverse footprint. We are seeing that our kids in our gifted and talented program do in fact reflect a diverse footprint, not as diverse as we want that footprint to be. We see our kids in our Project Lead the Way classes at the high school reflect a diverse footprint in one particular program, not as diverse as we want it to be. So we're making the changes to address some of those areas. We're also looking at our preparation for kids moving forward. I think it's also important for everybody to understand that when we prepare kids, and we look at things like college and career readiness, or we look at career placement and planning. We have a program at the high school that does in fact place kids in multiple jobs and internships, our school-based youth services program, as well as the guidance department. They are in fact doing that. But when you look at Hoboken as a Group One school district, which is very small, and you look at the state of New Jersey, unlike in states like Texas or California or some of the larger states, New Jersey schools, for the most part, particularly small Group One schools, do not operate a host of vocational programs within their own footprint. That, in New Jersey, you see a very unique pattern from most other states. And that is, the vocational programs are typically housed and carried out at the county educational level. So, we do have children that participate in the shared-time vocational programs through county prep and CAS prep and high tech. We operate a few vocational programs at Hoboken High School, like a culinary arts program and some certificate-oriented programs. But our size of our high school does not warrant itself to operating shop-oriented programs or technology-oriented programs that place students in careers. So we have to actually go out and find opportunities for those students through other means. But we are in fact starting on a college and career readiness initiative as well at the high school that Mr. Arnone is leading and running. That captures exactly what we are doing and is assessing some of the areas that we need to maybe improve upon a little bit more in that area as well. So, one of the things that I'll end with and give you the opportunity to potentially ask some questions that you may have is that, again, when we provide a presentation like this, we can give hundreds of charts of data. So what we did was we just put an appendices of charts together that you will be able to chew on a little bit in your own time when you look at the presentation a little bit more. And then if you have specific questions about what we're doing or what you think we're not doing, by all means, you can certainly contribute as well. Because as an administration, we're continuously changing and modifying programs in order to support students. So, with that being said, questions? Let's start a little bit. Do we want to do it that way, in terms of, we can take like one or two, and then we'll flow back up to public comment? Okay. Time? Okay. Yeah, by all means, we'll take some. Okay. So, okay. Yeah, so I think there's a difference between the term compete and the term compare. And I think that when we talk about competing, our students are being prepared on a daily basis and should be competing with every single student in the state of New Jersey to meet the highest expectations possible. However, when you do look at the breakdown of the socioeconomic DFG groups in the state of New Jersey, when we look holistically, the DFG groups are based on economics. That's what they're based on, they're based on economics. When you look at those DFG groups, what I'm saying is, it's real easy, it's very, very easy to jump in and say, here's where Hoboken High School is. Hoboken High School, that's like saying, we're going to compare a J-factor district with a B-factor district, and say that the kids, if we're going to do that, then we should compare all kids statewide, but not mis- incorrectly categorize kids if we're going to begin to compare. So, our goal here is to ensure that our kids are not only performing at the top of their district factor group, which in the case of our high school, would be the A-factor school districts or the B-factor school districts. But we want them to outperform every factor school district. What I'm saying is, we have to be careful when we begin comparing them. If we say we're going to start an initiative, or we're going to start a new initiative, that's, that's one thing. But when we're looking holistically at how our kids are performing, we want our kids performing at the highest of highest levels. But when it comes to just putting out charts that show Hoboken where it is, let's just be accurate in reporting where the kids really are in terms of their socioeconomic level. That's really important. That's just like saying, a child is wearing a blue shirt, but we're going to compare them to the children that are wearing green shirts. No, if we're going to set a comparative level, set the comparative level, and then attempt to exceed that comparative level, and then exceed all levels. But don't miscategorize where a child is in terms of a comparison orientation. No, 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 they've been around for a very, very long time. Yeah. Correct. Correct. Yeah, yeah. So let's be very, very clear about it. It's not the issue of setting low expectations. The issue is actually making sure those expectations are as high as possible, no matter where the student falls, or no matter where the school is in the socioeconomic breakdown. But what I'm saying is, that if we are in fact going to have socioeconomic DFG groups, put us in the right one, so that we in fact then have a better opportunity to gauge where our kids are and where we want to bring them. And that is going to be to the top of every one of the district factor groups. Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, you're the... Go ahead. Go ahead, Mike. Probably the middle school. So, obviously, we are always looking at our academic performance. We are seeing strides being made in the area of language arts literacy, where we have been targeting, our focus has been in the area of mathematics. That's something that we know we want to target, and we're continuing to target. So that's something that's really important. We're seeing that our special education population at the elementary school level, particularly because we educate our entire elementary population in one particular school, our data looks a little bit different than some other school districts do. But when we look at the growth rates of our elementary special education children, we are not seeing necessarily the growth that we want to see. But again, there's complexities that are associated with that in terms of what percentage of kids the state allows to take alternative assessments. When you're looking at children who really, really, really need some accommodations for those tests, but don't have the ability to have them because you're only allowed to have a certain percentage of accommodations, you run into some complexities. But when we look holistically at the district from an achievement perspective, I said it from the minute I walked in here, and that was, we need to see, and we need to continue, that our level of rigor is continuing to increase annually continuously. So with that being said, we started an initiative last year with language arts literacy, where we did in fact see some nice progress. And now we're looking at our mathematics programs. We've made some changes with mathematics programs. We're seeing something really interesting at the high school level in math. And that is that, as most schools are trying to get kids to enter in as algebra-ready, that was the NCTM National Council for the Teacher of Mathematics recommendation, was to have kids enter the high school algebra-ready. It's kind of interesting because if they come in algebra-ready, meaning that they will take algebra, that means by the time they hit their junior year, they would have finished Algebra II, taking pre-calculus in their senior year. So that is what we see as kind of a trend with our students. We have a pretty high population of school choice students at our high school that start at the high school, not necessarily starting from elementary school. But the PSATs and the SATs do have a heavy percentage in pre-calculus. So, what does that mean? That means we have to look at our math sequence a little bit differently because we're looking at making sure that if kids are going to in fact gain a better advantage of college and career opportunities by having higher SAT scores or potentially higher PSAT scores to start, we need to expose them to pre-calculus earlier so that they have the tools that they need. So that's something that we're looking at right now. And the possibility of operating a summer pre-pre-calculus program to expose kids at both the incoming 11th grade and incoming 12th grade level so that they have some of those experiences prior to actually sitting for those tests. Okay? Okay. We're good. All right.
Oh, he knows how to put the lights on. Does he do it?
Does this do the light on?
Oops.
Not that.
Thank you. Uh, so just to clarify, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Um, had to clarify, that, uh, report will be posted online with additional data.
Correct.
And you are inviting any additional questions that be submitted to you.
And then, any questions that are submitted, we will bring them to the board.
Bring them back here.
And then...
Okay, thank you.
Is there a special email or is that a? Um, they can, any questions can be sent to Mr. Fitchew's email as the Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the Business Administrator's Report then. Mr. Moffett, you have something?
Yes, I have like three items. I'll cover quickly. First, I'd like to point out for people in attendance that, uh, we have Resolution 10.16 on tonight's agenda. That is acknowledgement of receipt of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, known as the CAFRA, for the fiscal year ending June 2017, uh, and approval of that related corrective action plan. Uh, the district's auditor, Lurch Vincy Higgins, issued a clean unqualified opinion. And in their judgment, district financial records are fairly and appropriately represented and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles known as GAAP. Donna Jaffet, auditor from Lurch Vincy Higgins, presented in detail both the, uh, CAFRA, the financial report, and the, uh, related Auditor's Management Report on Administrative Findings. Mrs. Jaffet outlined the district financial, I should say fiscal year and financial condition, which includes fund balance and reserve positions. So I'll just, uh, quickly, uh, review that, uh, section. Um, the fund balance at the end of the fiscal period, June 2017, which means, uh, after all operations are completed, uh, we had 6.8, I should say, 6,810,266 in fund balance. Of that is broken out to various, uh, uh, reserves, and I'll go over them now. The capital reserve, uh, is 1,601,801 dollars. Maintenance reserve is 1,107,633. Emergency reserve is $580,000. Excess surplus of, of 878,977, which will be used, uh, in, uh, in the 2018, 2019 budget as a revenue source, which will, um, be used to, um, reduce the need to raise funds, so it'll be what they call tax relief. Um, we also have an amount, uh, previously budgeted as part of the 1718 budget, which is excess surplus in the amount of 639,281, which again will be used in the 2017-18 budget. We have, uh, year-end encumbrances in the amount of 353,528. Uh, we also have, uh, an earmarked amount of 213,650, which we have to use in this year's budget, which is again is 2017-18, uh, to close the gap that the state of New Jersey reduced our state aid amount by the comparable amount. So we were able to use some of our funds to cover that gap, uh, again after our budget was cast. So we won't have to have any negative impacts on the 1718 by that reduction by the Department of Education of the state of New Jersey. So that adds up to 6,810,266. And, uh, they also identified that due to the delayed state aid payment, uh, which comes in July, uh, there's a net, um, gap adjustment of 1,321,022 dollars. Uh, again, that's a, an overview of the financial position. If anybody, uh, you know, on the board has a question, we could, for the auditor specifically or me in general, uh, I could definitely get that question answered, uh, through my office. If you want to just forward that question to you, if you have anything today, I can answer, I, I will. Uh, if approved tonight, the CAFRA, the Auditor's Management Report, Related Corrective Action Plan, will be made available as it has been in the past, uh, on our district website and the, and the, uh, Business Office Financial archived area. Uh, second item, uh, next two items are both amendments. One, uh, we're amending, uh, Resolution 10.14, uh, to reflect Mr. John Madigan as Hudson County School Board Associate Delegate. Uh, and the last item is we are amending, uh, 10.15 to reflect Mr. Thomas Clubfell as New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Moffett.
Uh, just, uh, Ms. Angley, in your finance report, you're going to be talking a little bit about the, uh, audit report.
Just that we met with the others.
Okay, all right, just, just to confirm to the board that.
Yep.
Uh, we, we did review that, uh, in depth. Then we'll move on to Committee Report's curriculum.
That's me.
Sorry, I'm, I'm just...
I switched. We switched a little bit. Uh, the Curriculum and Wellness Committee met on January 11th at 1 o'clock. In attendance were, um, Ms. Angley, Ms. Evans, Mr. Clubfell, and myself, and Dr. Johnson. Uh, the committee discussed the grants, uh, which will be approved tonight, in, uh, 8.01 on the agenda. Uh, some of the grants we discussed were the American Association University of Women, the AAUW STEM Equity Grant for a summer coding program for 30 incoming sixth, seventh, and eighth grade girls. A Sony Grant, which is a grant for 100 classrooms, which will include Gen Ed and Special Ed across the district with sound field systems, um, which will remove noise, it clarifies teachers' voices, and it's, uh, particularly very helpful for children with ADHD. A grant, uh, called the Keys of Inspiration Grant. Um, it's an equipment for Connors Elementary School, which will supply 20 to 30 roll-in digital keyboards, uh, the curriculum for them, music sheets and workbooks. The PSEG Foundation Grant. Uh, because Connors holds a certification as a sustainable Jersey school, it qualifies for this grant. The grant will expose fourth grade students to three environmental field trips with a focus on biodiversity, sustainability, and ecosystems. And lastly, the Teachers of Critical Language Program Grant. It's, um, it's a Step One teacher from Morocco to teach one year of Intro to Arabic Language and Culture courses at Hoboken High School. We also talked about the Harvard Model Congress. As Dr. Johnson, um, stated in her report, our Hoboken High School students are currently in San Francisco. I think they're on their way back now to participate in the annual Mock Government Conference. 12 students along with Mr. DiBardo and Mr. Huggins will assume the roles of real-life senators, congressmen, and members of special programs. They will participate in one of the most prestigious and realistic government simulations in the country. Um, we wish them good luck. And, um, if you're on social media, which I know a lot of you are, um, you can follow their journey, which has been really exciting, on Facebook. If you type in Hoboken High School Harvard Model Congress, they've been posting lots of pictures and just kind of their, um, daily activities. On, uh, 9/17 on the agenda, there's also an item, uh, for NJIT Pre-College Enrichment Meeting, which will be held on January 20th, um, this weekend from 8 to 1 PM. Um, our Hoboken, um, high school students and high school guidance staff will take a trip to NJIT for pre-college enrichment programs for this coming summer. Um, exciting partnership with Stevens Institute with Dr. Peter Cohen, which will involve our middle school students. Students will work on the design of two projects, an all-new activity park and a living classroom. Students will conduct the research, design the project prototype, work on marketing, and present the final product. Um, a meeting with the students will be held on January 19th, which is this week, Friday, to talk about the projects and design a calendar and their timelines. The activity park will actually be designed and built in the back part of, um, our Demeris parking lot. Dr. Johnson met with district parent, uh, Mr. Chris Clark, to discuss feeder athletic programs at our middle school. Um, Dr. Johnson and Mr. Clark will be attending classes at Stevens on Friday and continue the conversation for those. And our last item is College and Career Readiness Plan has been launched. The High School Guidance Department has been working really hard on this college and career readiness program. Um, if you go on our district website now, it's under Curriculum. So if you click on Curriculum, it, the drop-down tab will come down and, um, and it's a whole new, um, programs for, uh, to show you what we're doing in our district and, uh, what we're doing to get our students ready for the paths before and after, um, high school graduation. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I look over here to Ms. Soboloff for Facilities.
Thank you. Uh, the Facilities Committee met on Thursday, January 11th at 12, uh, noon. In attendance was, uh, Mr. Tim Callagie, Tom Clubfell, Sharon Angley, Sheila Delara, and myself. Uh, there are only, uh, two items on the agenda, which is, uh, the Facilities Request, which is, uh, ZOG Sports has submitted their request for their adult programs, and the Hoboken Family Alliance has submitted their request for their annual Cabin Fever event. Uh, there's an ongoing camera project in the district and that will add to, uh, the existing cameras that we have. This is an ongoing initiative and will add some additional cameras, uh, in, in some outside locations throughout the district. Uh, the long-range planning is continuing. The demographers have met with, uh, the zoning and the planning boards and the building departments, and they're reviewing permits, recently completed projects, and any, um, active approvals. Uh, due to the, um, period of cold weather recently we had, there were just a few minor, um, issues in the district with frozen pipes, but that was all taken care of. And we're now beginning planning for the summer projects. So, uh, the building staff will begin to plan now for some projects they would want throughout the district. Uh, this wasn't in the committee, but I just wanted to mention the play. Is that okay? Um, Spring Awakening is on February 9th, 10th, and 11th. I just, because I figured it would be before the next meeting, so I just wanted to get that in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soboloff. Uh, Ms. Angley, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee met on Thursday, January 11th at 6:30 PM. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Moffett, Mr. Clubfell, Ms. DeKurian, and myself. The committee reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for board approval. Um, some of the agenda items I wanted to point out. Uh, Item 10.12, Approval of Donations. Uh, we want to thank Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories, who made a donation to Connors for the purposes of inspiring lifelong learning in math and science. And thank you to Dr. Johnson on behalf of the Hoboken Middle School for participation in the Harlem Wizards fundraiser. Um, as Mr. Moffett, uh, mentioned, Item 10.16, Acknowledgement of Receipt of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the financial year 2017, and Approval of the Financial Year 2017 Corrective Action Plan for the Hoboken Board of Education. The committee met with, um, the district accounting firm, Lurch Vincy and Higgins, to review the 2017 financial statements and audit recommendations. The committee was pleased with the unqualified audit opinion that was granted for the fiscal 2007, for the fiscal year 2017. Other items discussed by the committee, um, food service. Our November revenues for normal and evening meal programs were $5,000. And we discussed the 2018-2019 budget. Um, the committee discussed planning for this, for the budget. Um, currently each district school is in the process of building their own budgets and will then meet with Mr. Moffett to present and modify their projections. Um, the district will not have state aid figures until sometime in February, which could have, um, an impact on our budgeting. That's it.
Thank you. And, uh, Ms. Evans, Governance?
Okay, thanks. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on January 11th at 8:15 PM. In attendance were myself, Chatali Kana, Irene Soboloff, Thomas Clubfell, and Superintendent Johnson. We reviewed and recommended for approval all items on the agenda tonight. Uh, just pointing out a few that generated discussion. Uh, Item 9.08, um, Approval of Assemblies and Presentations. Uh, this is a big favorite that happens at Wallace School every year. Penguin and its handler, uh, from Jen, Jenkins's Aquarium, will be coming to the school to teach the kindergartners about Penguin habits and habitats. Um, as the superintendent mentioned, um, the second half of, um, the Passport to Learning Program, the after-school program at the elementary school starts February 5th. Um, so we're approving staff for that on Item 9.09. The after-school program explorations at the middle school runs the full year, so the staff for that was approved at the beginning of the school year. Um, but we have a couple additions on Item 9.12, um, for the academic support portion. And then also, the sports do run, um, by season. So the, um, the season's offering will be volleyball, so that's on the agenda now. A club is also being added, the Helping Hands Community Service Club, um, now has enough students interested in participating, so that's being added. As the superintendent also mentioned in her report, the, um, Middle School Expo will be Wednesday, January 24th, and we're approving, um, staff for that, Item 9.15. Um, and, uh, finally, also as the superintendent mentioned, she is meeting with the Union League of Hudson County, um, this week to further develop our, develop our partnership with them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, do board members have questions or comments on, uh, any of the committee reports? No? Uh, then we'll move on to, uh, public comments on agenda items, please.
Uh, we have two speakers signed up. Uh, first one is Courtney Wicks.
On agenda items, okay, on agenda items only. Uh, second, uh, is Patricia Waiters.
Good evening, Patricia Waiters, 1233 Park Avenue. I have a few agenda items. Just please bear with me one minute. With respect to grants, I'm going to hold off on that one. I did have that marked on my agenda. And about, um, public participation, on the second page, I mean, page four of 22, if you see this big black square, this darkened square, and it says, "Public Participation." It's faded, you can't really see the words. And when this was put on here a couple of years ago, before the board left Wallace and came here, I didn't even see why this was necessary. And to me, like I said before, and I'm going to say it again, it almost seemed like you're trying to silence somebody and, like, when I look under the, uh, Civil Rights Acts and movements, this was put on here when the board member, I remember it like it was yesterday, got into an argument with a member of the public. And it goes in detail telling us how we supposed to speak, who we supposed to address, which has really faded out. But, um, when you go on, in, on, in the agenda, it also mentions something about the public portion. But I'm just saying this here, this big, black, ugly square that's on the agenda, on every agenda since that incident occurred with the board member, was placed on here. I don't see no sense of it. I can't make sense out of it. You can't even see what the words are saying. But I wish you can make that more clear so people could read this on the fourth page. Now, tonight, item number 17 on Agenda Page 20 of 22. I'm basically saying this to place this on the record tonight about, uh, consideration of, for the executive section, for the board trustee interview. Just to be clear, and this is basically for the people that's watching this and members of the public, um, would, to make sure it's in full compliance and, and it's, and it's going to be done right and professional with no backdoor deals like it was in the past. So I'm letting people know tonight that's watching me, Pat Waiters. There's no secret that I'm a candidate. I wasn't recruited for this position tonight. Or, um, I was a candidate in the election and received 2,072 votes. I want that also placed on the record. I also want placed on the record number 17 and number... 15, because they're all in compliance together. It's still executive session, mentioning that open seat. We know what's been happening lately in Hoboken. It's all over the media and the press. And I want to say tonight, there's only one, one process, it should have been, that was told to us and members of the public. I brought the original article in here, when it opened up that seat and said, "Anybody can join this seat to apply for this position." I did everything right from the day it came out in the Hudson Reporter to present today, 2016. And now I'm here tonight as one of the candidates for an interview. I want people to notice watching this, please take me very, very serious. I want people to notice watching this, please take me very, very serious. I hope tonight, each and every one of you use your conscience. Each and every one of you go in there and do not let politics play a role in this appointment tonight, okay? It already got back to me and is really disturbing and is mind-bothering. That's why I want this aired. I don't have to be nobody's friend, okay? And I don't have to have a certain qualification. I ran for the board for 10 years. This is why I want it placed on the record. Never missed a board meeting, okay? And I showed interest for a reason, because we need change and we need a minority on that board and a person of color. This would be the fourth time a seat became available when it was up to the board to appoint somebody and I was overlooked. This would be the fourth time. The first time was with you, Ms. Soboloff, okay? So you almost knew how I felt standing at this microphone.
Ms. Waiters, please, please address comments to the chair.
No, the board as an entire. You missed the president, but the board, you won board. Okay, with that being said, the reason I said that, a seat became available, she was a candidate just like myself. So what I'm saying to you tonight is, she should almost know the process by now, okay? And it's not to go recruit somebody to put on this board and play politics. I'm speaking tonight because I want this on the record, in case I have to subpoena it in the future, to let you know the process, fair and open, okay? No politics, because we know two mayors endorsed the last ticket, okay? So it's really mind-bothering, and it's mind-bothering to the people and to people like me that I know I'm more than qualified and I'm interested and I'm a candidate for number 17 that's going to go into close executive session for the Hoboken Board Trustee. Thank you.
Thank you. It's the all speakers. Yes. I would like to take a moment and just, Ms. Waiters, respond to your comments about the public participation statement there. Those all come from board policy. It was my suggestion to put them there, and I think that they are at the podium when people sign up, just so people understood the, sort of, the rules of decorum here. They're not meant to censor anyone. They're there to protect you and your right to speak and to protect board members. It's my job.
Did you see the camera reading?
Well, that's, that's a problem with photocopying. I apologize for that, but I think it does appear on the, on the podium. Or used to. Well, we can clean that up for you, I'm sure. As it says at the bottom, "Thank you for helping to maintain a courteous and respectful atmosphere." That is only the point of that, not to silence anyone, I assure you. We can move on to consent agenda, I believe. I guess I can make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Anything that needs to be polled? I just would like to clarify one thing, Mr. Moffett. It's that minor one about the delegates to the NJSPA.
Right.
Yeah. Mr. Madigan is going to be the delegate to the Hudson County. That's 10.14, is that correct?
Correct, that's what I had.
Okay, that's right. And I'm gonna be the delegate to the...
For 10.15.
And Ms. Delara, I am volunteering you as the alternate to me if I cannot attend, but I will.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. We'll fill in that blank. There's a motion, there's a second. Can we call the roll? Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Ms. Soboloff?
Yes.
Ms. DeKurian?
Yes.
And Mr. Klupfel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Sounds to me like motion passes. Thank you. Public comments on non-agenda items. We have five speakers. The first speaker is Elizabeth Adams. Again, just so every, every public speaker knows, please state your name, address, and address all comments to the chair.
Elizabeth Adams, 320 Monroe Street. Good evening. Tonight I would like to comment regarding the article that appeared on the front page and also page four of the December 24th, 2017 edition of the Hoboken Reporter concerning the hideous and disgusting incident that took place on high school property during the course of regular school hours on November 30th, 2017, a little over six weeks ago now. In reading this article, several thoughts and questions spring to my mind. As I dare say, many students, parents, and guardians have similar concerns. Firstly, the Hoboken Reporter states that the four perpetrators of this crime were each charged with similar counts. With three of the four perpetrators, the word "conspiracy" was used. I find the use of this particular word to be interesting for the fact that the word "conspiracy" implies premeditation. That is to say that this incident, and specifically when and where it took place, necessarily had to have been planned. In the Hoboken Reporter article, it is stated that the victim was quoted by CBS News as stating that she was pushed into a storage closet while she was on her way to her next class. In point of fact, there are conflicting reports as to the nature of this room. The Jersey Journal reports that it was a restroom. Regardless of where precisely it took place, I would ask, whatever happened to the practices, however considered to be old-school, of hall monitors and students having to have hall passes in order to be able to traverse the hallways while classes are in session? A guard is normally present at the main entrance during school-sponsored events. Likewise, guards should regularly patrol the hallways and even be stationed outside restrooms and outside and even inside elevators. It is even questionable as to whether non-handicapped, disabled, or otherwise infirm students should even be able to use elevators without express school permission. Storage closets should be routinely locked when someone in authority is not present. Student access should be limited to those students with express school permission to access. Parents and guardians genuinely need to feel and actually know that when they send their children to school, that their children are actually going to be safe in a secure environment. The responsibility for making these measures a reality, make no mistake about it, rests squarely upon the shoulders of the school system and all of its employees, not waiting for matters to reach critical mass and having to pass the buck and kick the can of worms down the road to the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office. It is notable that the school touts an anti-bullying policy. This incident can certainly be considered to be bullying in the extreme. This policy should be actively enforced. Otherwise, what is the point of having it if only lip service is to be paid to it? The victim stated that she had told a school official in the past that she had experienced problems with the individuals in question. This is a seriously concerning point. Why were these problems not addressed at the outset? Is there any record of this? And if not, why not? And why did this school official not promptly deal with these problems when they first occurred? The perpetration of this act is a violation and betrayal of trust, not only on a personal level for the victim, but also of basic confidence in the school system that it failed to provide for the basic safety and well-being of Hoboken students. The school system also has a responsibility to the students and their respective parents and guardians not to enable or otherwise protect those individuals who perpetrate criminal acts, alleged or otherwise. It is readily apparent that the spin and therefore attempted damage control is already in full swing. It shouldn't matter who any particular student is or isn't in the school pecking order. A criminal is a criminal, whether or not that they happen to be a B-M-O-C, that is to say, a big man on campus. The perpetrators of this heinous crime should be expelled. For the school to do anything short of that sends an extremely wrong message to students. It implies acceptability of that behavior. This type of behavior should never be tolerated under any circumstances whatsoever. Let's stop aiding and abetting by enabling via a culture of silence and attempting to sweep things under the rug and therefore being complicit with what is, when all is said and done, criminal behavior. It's time to demonstrate that at all levels of society, that time is truly up. #StopRapeCulture. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Courtney Wicks.
I just have, I'm just gonna take a few minutes just to ask a couple of questions. I noticed that weren't in the earlier presentation, so I figured I would just ask them in public comments. The first question that I have is, what are the protocols for police engagement in schools? And how do you hold the administrators accountable? I'm, I'm hearing reports from parents that six-year-olds are being removed from Connors by, by threatening force of police. Police are getting on the phone, threatening parents. And I know this was a conversation that I brought up last year, and I know what was said was that there was a policy in place, but I think the enforcement and clear understanding of the protocols is, is kind of missing. The other question is, how do you measure the effectiveness of your homeschooling program? Is there a direct correlation between putting children in homeschooling and the reduction in school suspension? Would you consider this program a success or failure? And how does the homeschooling program impact college readiness, high school dropout, and graduation rates? And the last question that I have is, how do we ensure that complicit and/or implicit bias isn't tainting the classification process of Black and Brown and socioeconomic disadvantaged students? I'm hearing all kinds of reports that parents are feeling pressured. In some cases, they're told that they are not allowed to, their child isn't allowed to return until they are classified. And so I, I think the public and other parents need to know, how does a district rule make sure that implicit and complicit bias isn't part of the targeting of children who are being, who are, who are being told they should be classified and also being used as a, as a, as a, I guess, a weapon to, you know, get parents and students under control? So those are the only questions that I have. I know you can't answer them right now, but I wanted to go on the record and state these questions. Thanks.
Next speaker is Patricia Waiters.
I know it's a public portion, Patricia Waiters, 1233 Park Avenue. I know it's a public meeting, but I'm just programming this to record it for quality assurance purposes. January 16th, 2018, the time is 9:34. I deem that necessary for one reason. The last past couple of months, the dialogue back and forth over the internet is becoming really disturbing, especially when it comes from some of our board members. Right before the election back in October, a derogatory comment was made. I was approached with the news people before I even came in the building. I refuse, I refused again to be overlooked, to keep playing these games. The worst thing in the world you could do, and you should learn by the city council by now, is to silence Pat Waiters, okay? When you try to play magic and make me disappear, I become louder and vicious and that angry black woman, the people stereotype me and put the derogatory things on the internet that the same Kids First group or whoever else is endorsed by. So it's real disturbing to see that. It's real disturbing to also be threatened that if you don't like them or they don't like you, you don't have a chance. So tonight, I'm recording this to say, my one vote that I know I had tonight is not here tonight. Unfortunately, he had to work, John Madigan. We all know in Hoboken about the majority versus the minority, and I refuse to keep lying to people that watch this and people like Ms. Wicks that I had the pleasure of meeting three months ago. When I'm confronted by not just Ms. Wicks, by 3,000 people, for the ones with the short-term memory, three years ago when I ran as an independent and got close to 3,000 votes. Since then, I have gotten nothing less than 2,000 votes running, not with the mayor, not with Kids First, not with no political powerful boss, but with Pat Waiters alone. And I stand strong and I'm gonna be taken very serious, okay? So I'm not gonna look the other way if issues are being addressed, not being addressed. I'm gonna get my feet and go in it tooth and nail, especially when it's disturbing to see websites with derogatory language and people alleging that I agree with that when, when I don't agree with half of what I'm reading. But it's sad because this same person endorsed Kids First ticket, and Kids First is Kids First. You could change your name all the time, and congratulations to the new people that came under the same ticket. We're gonna see where your conscience lie tonight, okay? And the rest of your little term on the board. This young lady, I forgot your name, but you remember one night I followed you out of here with anger and frustration, thinking you were, I'm sorry, thinking you were somebody else. But with that being said, that's me. That's me. And you remember that night, because we reconciled and I apologized and I said to you, I said to you, I thought you was Ms. Minatula. And I said, I'm sorry. But see, when you have a behavior, when you have this type of behavior being displayed in such a small city, we don't forget a face. And I am addressed in the whole body, okay? I don't, I don't have to look at each other, but this is a government body. I know, Mr. Clumpfert, I know this. I speak at enough meetings. I'm addressing you as a government body. I don't have to directly go one-on-one with you and me with a debate. I don't have to do that. And you took up some of my time. I don't want to lose my chain of thought here because it gotta get better. I don't want to put no more energy to what happened in the past that have failed our school system. I don't want to put no more energy, because my kids is in this district, to see our kids lose. My kids are drowning, their hand is out the water. I never said who don't help me. Dr. Johnson, you've been of great access to me and my family since you've been here in such a short time. My only thing is, in two years, two years, I'm trying to, maybe what you don't see enlighten you on this is Hoboken, is dirty politics. I sat right there with Gail Johnson when they voted you in, and I said to you, please don't play politics. All of my meetings is on YouTube, okay? So you could go back and look. I told every superintendent that came into this district, don't bring in politics, because it gets ugly. And that's what happened. So tonight again, okay? Tonight again, I'm gonna see, do people have a conscience, okay? Because I'm not leaving it here. I'm very upset because I was not coming. I was, am I right, Ms. Wicks? I was not gonna even come, because when I got the phone call, don't waste your time, they already picked who they're gonna put, okay? And it also bothered me because Monday night, I seen you at the table in conference with this same individual. So I want this placed on the record tonight, okay? And I was the bigger person, because I think I deserve it. That's why I came out. That's why I came out, because I was not coming. All right, so I want to wrap that up, because I'm gonna CC this to the NAACP or whoever else I need, okay, for the support to look into these allegations that was told to me tonight to defer me from coming in here, getting this interview for this seat. I was not gonna even come, because I'm not giving you my energy like that, okay? I don't want to be a part of the problem, I want to be a part of the solution. Thank you. That's why it's so important to have a person of color on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters. Next speaker is Kate McHushen.
Hi, Kate McWeston, 1025 Maxwell Lane. I just wanted, I'm here on behalf of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation. I just wanted to promote the Mums Night Out that's happening on February 8th at Willie McBride's. It's an opportunity for all mums across the district to come together, to meet each other, ask parents that may have kids in the older levels of the school, how they're finding things, and basically to meet and for the community that is Hoboken Public Schools to get together. For those that don't know where Willie McBride's is, it's in Grand Street. I also just wanted to comment on the presentation that was made earlier about the changes that are happening in Hoboken and, I suppose, urge corporate organizations and property companies and those that are making money out of the district to put that money back into education and the community that could benefit from their money. And obviously, the Public Education Foundation works cohesively with Dr. Johnson on the initiatives that it supported. And I can share that over the past two months, we did a survey of more than 100 parents, teachers, and administrators. than 100 parents, teachers, and administrators across the district, and basically, it found that 99% of those that were surveyed were very proud of everything that's happening of their schools. And they also outlined where they would like to see the funding allocated, which we will release in coming months. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ratsko, and I'm gonna toe him in.
My name is Ratsko Tomlin, 800 Jackson Street. Just wanted to come here in front of a board and Superintendent Johnson, I try to do this in person at least twice a year, to provide some comments, feedback, and, you know, certain suggestions. I have two kids in, you know, public school here in Hoboken. First of all, you know, wanted to say thank you to Dr. Johnson, to great improvements that I, as a parent of a schoolchildren, a public school system, have seen since she came to the district, implemented a bunch of new programs that, you know, kids are benefiting from. Passport to Learning, which was initiated last year, you know, first year, great program, lot of kinks, lot of things that didn't necessarily work out, the vote, the school, and the superintendent kinda solicited, took feedback from parents. We saw some changes this year that made program better, addressed some of the issues that we also, et cetera. Hopefully, next year, we're gonna have even better yet program. You know, gifted and talented, I think it's great that the policy was implemented to proactively go ahead and then test all the kids and make sure that everyone is given equal opportunity to participate in these wonderful programs and that, you know, certain kids that otherwise maybe wouldn't be enrolled are being challenged in a way that they haven't been in the past, You know, one thing that I would like to see, you know, maybe you have it already in the working as a parent of a child that's going to move this year to middle school, you know, I guess in this building here, to learn a little bit more about, you know, how, you know, is the school day going to be any different? How is this year going to be different from next year, I mean, sorry, last year? Maybe get an opportunity to meet the teachers, or then changes in curriculums, things of nature. I think you guys did a wonderful job past two years when you were establishing Passport to Learning, you had that big event, like an open house in Hoboken High School, and, you know, presentation, Q&amp;A, et cetera. I know it's difficult to do for everything because of the time constraints, et cetera, but I feel it would be very helpful. I know a lot of us parents are a little bit anxious, mostly in a good way, but, you know, trying to learn and understand what's gonna happen next year as kids, you know, move here. Another thing that I wanted to mention and see if that something can possibly be entertained is, I recently became aware, I'm not even sure if it's correct information or not, that apparently Hoboken High School has a pool. And I know a lot of parents of younger children kinda like trying to figure out, okay, how do we, you know, teach our kids to swim, et cetera? And there are not too many options here. I think there's like Sky Club and Stevens Institute, and there's problem with time slots, et cetera. And, you know, I think it'd be wonderful if through school system, we can come up with a program, you know, free or for parents pay for it, et cetera, for all the younger kids in Hoboken to get the opportunity to utilize that pool during the weekend or evening hours for some sort of swimming lessons, maybe in the summertime, et cetera, 'cause I have a feeling that that facility might be underutilized right now. Again, not that important in big scheme of things, but I think it would be a nice thing to have. That's all for me for time being. Again, thank you for your efforts, and, you know, we're looking forward to continue to improve the school district for all the kids, okay?
Thank you. Who's the last speaker? Who's the last speaker? Thank you.
Mr. Tomlin, the, on Saturday, I think it was, all parents of fifth-grade children and sixth-grade children, an email went out, so check. If you haven't received it, just let us know, we'll check your email, we'll resend it out. We put a series of activities together for fifth-grade students and sixth-grade students. They are a little bit differentiated with more active kind of events and different things like that for the current sixth grade, but the fifth grade is included in those as well. But on January 24th, there's a middle school expo, which will, almost as if it's a quasi-open house, giving parents and families and kids of fifth grade and sixth grade the opportunity to come in and get to meet some staff members and kids and things like that, see the school. But in the email, there was a digital program of studies that was included to have a little bit of a better idea of the course of the school day and some of the programs as well. If you didn't get it, let us know.
One other aside, Ms. McQueston, if you would relay back to the Hoboken Public Education Foundation, when I was at the inauguration of the new mayor at the high school, I received so many compliments on people who didn't know the high school, who came in and said, "Wow, is this new?" Because it just looks so good, and I think the foundation played a big part in the refurbishment of that, so thank you to the foundation for me. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to, what we would do is go into executive session for the purpose of candidate interviews for the board vacancy. We need a motion, can you help me?
Motion. Yes, so the motion which is set forth in item 15 of the agenda is for the interviews themselves to be taking place in executive session. Any action related to the selection of the candidate, including obviously the vote, would take place in public. It may or may not take place immediately after the interviews, it could take place at a subsequent meeting, you have 65 days to fill the vacancy, but the motion on the agenda should be clarified to make it clear that it is the interviews, not the decision that's gonna take place in executive session, and I think that clarifies, as it should, for the public exactly what's gonna transpire.
And it was misunderstood that we have 65 days from the moment, from when we received notification of the vacancy, which was...
That's correct, from the vacancy...
Right before the holidays.
Correct, correct.
So I think our deadline is February 2nd. Okay. So I make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose...
You should ask for the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we have a motion, and then do we have a second?
Second.
Is that right?
Someone else made the motion, that's all I was saying.
Melanie made the motion.
Okay, so the motion is moved to second, and to be precise, the motion is, because there's a blank in the executive session, and specifically limited to adjourning to executive session for the purposes of candidate interviews for the current vacancy on the Hoboken Board of Education.
Okay. That's been moved to the second, did any discussion?
Do you have a timeframe? Do you have to...
I'm gonna guess, at least an hour. All in favor, or let's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public portion is closed, we'll go into executive session in the PD room. All right, we're back from executive session, need a motion to go back in the public?
Motion. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. We interviewed candidates in executive session. Is anybody ready to make a nomination tonight?
I'd like to nominate Elizabeth Walker.
Elizabeth Walker's their second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I was the second.
There's no other nominations, Mr. Rock, do you recall the role? Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
Ms. DeKirian?
Yes.
And Mr. Koffel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
We should thank everybody.
Yeah, definitely.
As I express congratulations, I'd also like to express our thanks to all the candidates. This is a very compelling time in this district, and it's gratifying to see passionate people step forward and take an interest in the district and be willing to participate, and as I quickly remind everyone, this is an election in November. And we welcome your participation. Are you willing to be sworn in?
Yeah.
We can do that now, rather than, I guess, a special session, and you can be part of committee meetings next month.
All right. But do you think next month, they could have a little picture or something? Because I think that's nice.
Yeah. That's what she said.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you all for who came out. It was a great set of interviews. No, I was saying thank you to everybody, I mean, it was an awesome round of candidates.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And that I will bear true faith...
And that I will bear true faith...
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same...
And to the governments established in the United States...
And to the governments established in the United States...
And this state...
And this state...
Under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
Aye, Mr. Thompson.
Aye, Elizabeth Walker.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by the law...
For the office of member of a board of education...
For the office of member of a board of edu-, board of education...
And that I am not disqualified as a voter...
And I'm not disqualified as a voter...
Pursuant to RS 194-1...
Pursuant to RS 194-1...
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense...
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense...
Listed in NJS 18A 12-1...
Listed in NJS 18A 12-1...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially...
And justly perform all the duties of that office...
And justly perform all the duties of that office...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to close, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Opposed?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to close, please.
She's so sweet.
I'm gonna have my drink.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah. 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 Yeah.